I am. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting for Monday, April 22, 2027 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice. Rule call, please.
I have the video on. There's no rule call. Unmute yourself, Laura. Lisa, I think we're the only public on here. I actually don't see another public. Maybe Don Johnson.
We're waiting for... Lisa, are you all set?
The guy who took my place is not here. Do you want to see him?
Maybe we can mute that participant, Patrick?
Lisa's muted right now.
Okay, well, we need Lisa unmuted, and I think that is Denise Pike that we need muted. Okay, Lisa, could you do the rule call for us, please? Hey, do we have anyone else who can take attendance for us, Mr. Johnson?
I can do it. This might not be in the correct order, but because I'm going to take it from what I can read on the screen. Commissioner Minser.
I'm here.
Mayor Crop.
Here.
Commissioner Fournier.
Here.
Commissioner Hammond.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
One more.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to find... Who did I miss? Ah, Commissioner Voorhees.
Right.
There you are.
Okay.
Trouble is, if anybody makes any noise, the list changes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All present.
Very good. Can we have an adoption of the... Sorry, let's go to announcements first. So, good evening and welcome to the city of Mount Clemens' third, sorry, fourth virtual city commission meeting. I'm Mayor Laura Crop, and I'm connecting to this meeting remotely, just like you are. So are the other members of the city commission and city staff. The technical side of managing this meeting is being handled by Patrick Lineberry of McComb Cable Network. This meeting, sorry, the audio portion of tonight's meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. We can do that because we are broadcasting it from the Mount Clemens Network, sorry, the McComb Cable Network studio rather than from the city commission chambers in City Hall. McComb, the MCN does not have the equipment necessary to do a live telecast from City Hall. When this emergency is over and we return to holding normal in-person meetings at City Hall, we will have to return to a delayed telecast. Procedurally, tonight's meeting will be slightly different than a normal meeting. If you ever have participated in a large conference call, you know the problems that occur when two or three people attempt to speak at the same time. To control that, we will have all participants muted. Commissioners will be unmuted one at a time when it's their turn to speak. When we get to the public comment portion of the meeting, Patrick will unmute everyone. If you wish to speak, please announce your first name only and wait for me to acknowledge you before you continue. When you are called upon, please give us your full name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. With that, let's begin. Are there any other announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports?
I have nothing.
Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Rule call, please.
First, let me verify. That was Fournier-Minser?
No, that was Fournier-Hammond.
Commissioner Minser? Commissioner Minser?
Yes.
Mayor Crop.
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Commissioner Fournier.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. We move to public participation. Again, if you are on the call and would like to participate, we ask that you now state your first name. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the next item of business. Issues or questions raised during the previous meetings. City Manager, Mr. Johnson?
There were no questions raised at the previous meeting.
Okay, all right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, the approval of minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from regular city commission meeting on Monday, April 6, and special meeting on Thursday, April 16.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
Okay, can you help me with the maker of the motion?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Hammond? Can I... Go ahead.
Can anybody hear me yet?
Yes.
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay.
Lisa, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have Hammond and Voorhees for those.
Perfect.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, or sorry, hearing none, can we have a rule call, please?
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, General Business 9A, COVID-19 Hazard Pay.
Okay, you have a proposal before you. This was developed in response to a request that came from some of the commissioners. I laid out a plan. Feel free to change it. This, I think, is largely based on the approach that the county used, but it's basically my interpretation of what came out of the meeting last Thursday, and I've already been advised by some commissioners that that's not how they saw it, so.
Okay, we need a motion on the floor before the commission discusses?
Motion to discuss the COVID-19 Hazard Pay Plan for the city employees.
Or...
Any... And now we can discuss, I suppose. Any questions about the plan?
When we talked on Thursday, I believe we ended up at a lump sum amount instead of an hourly pay. So I was confused when I read this, if we had... Because, like I said, I think we were at a lump sum. In addition, there is on the plan a clause here that says it'll be considered a special payment, not subject to employer pension contributions, and not included in the FAC. I would like to eliminate that. And I would also like to eliminate the... It says the maximum number of hours of hazard pay any employee may receive is 500. I would like to eliminate that.
Well, this is Laura Fournier. I have... I have some issues with this that I would like to discuss. This addresses employees that are essential with... That are exposed to a higher degree of risk, which I totally agree should receive hazard pay, such as firefighters and the dial-a-ride bus drivers. However, beyond that, I think we have to evaluate it on more, in more detail. The cost of this program through May is being estimated at $53,500. That equals about 45 houses' city property taxes for the year. If it goes on farther, it's obviously going to cost a lot more than that. We are facing some unprecedented times, and we have to be careful what we're doing. There is so many jobs out there that we all... That are continuing to go on without hazard pay. And I think that someone who has no choice, that there is a real risk, like a firefighter, is totally different than someone who's working inside. I have checked with, for example, I know someone who works for the city of Birmingham in BPW. They are not getting hazard pay. I have a neighbor here who works at Beaumont in the kitchens. He is not getting hazard pay. There are so many examples. I don't know. I could go on and on and on. I think we have to be careful. This isn't about the employees are still employed, getting their full paycheck, all their benefits, and their retirement. And I think we have to be cautious for the residents of the city of Mount Clemens because this could really add up after a while.
Commissioner Minser, the things that you took out of the... That you would want to take out of the plan, I think, would increase the... Could potentially increase the cost significantly. So I definitely would not agree with that. I too am with Commissioner Fournier when we say how that, you know, we all agree that firemen and dial-a-ride workers are being, you know, exposed daily and definitely, you know, are put in a hazard kind of situation. We're obviously, as doing our best to mitigate their risk by having PPE and everything else, but I agree that they fall under what we would hope to provide hazard pay. That being said, this kind of cost to the city, I would like to see this limited for only the month of April. I would like to see it only given to the people that are working in the... What, Mr. Johnson, the higher-risk exposure, I would like to only provide hazard pay for those employees, not the lower exposure people. I mean, I would love to give, you know, raises to everyone, but I think we know, it's not like we are just hoping we won't have a tough economic situation in the months ahead. Every economic forecast that we are looking at says we will. And so it's our job and our duty to make sure that we're preparing for that. So I would only... I would like to see this limited to one month. I would for sure like to see a limit to the maximum number of hours if we're going to do an hourly pay rate. And I don't think that the city could, can afford a $53,000 payout. And, I mean, even at the $21,500, this is a very costly, unexpected expense.
Well, first, let's be careful of our language. This is not a raise, okay? This is a hazard pay, gratuity pay, whatever you want to call it. It is not a raise. And the four groups that we originally talked about was the Fire Department, the Utilities Department, Water and Sewer, the Dial-A-Ride, and the DPS. Those are the four groups that were considered essential right from the start. And those are the four groups that are working in those four conditions that I outlined before and that are on, you know, Mr. Johnson's plan. Employees working in 24/7 operations, employees working in uncontrolled or less-controlled environment, employees with direct contact with the public, and employees who are directly responsible for maintaining essential services for our facilities.
Which is...
And I don't see how... As I don't see how we can limit it to just April, if the governor is going to order stay-at-home shelter-in-place in May.
We don't know that he is, first of all, and we don't know that she's going to. We also don't know... We also can only do what we can afford, Denise. Commissioner Minser?
We have a $6.614, $641,000 general fund balance. If we can't spend this kind of stuff on our frontline employees, I despair at how, you know, that message is going to come across to the employees who are battling this up close and personal every day.
I think we all, all, everyone is battling this up close and personal every day, some to different degrees and others in terms of their jobs. But we, every resident in the city is battling this. And before we talk about a government, what we have in the general fund, I want to see this budget. I've heard some things that are not particularly, that need to be corrected from the last budget. I don't know what the interest rates and those are bound to decline. There's going to be a lot of changes, and we need to evaluate this in the context of our budget. Furthermore, we've got a bunch of residents, all kinds of residents out here, that are facing extraordinarily, extraordinary hardships. We have waitresses who can't work, and they are not... They have homes. Their property taxes will not be deferred. They're not, they're not getting benefits. So before we just, you just take this out of context of the entire budget, I think we also need to look at what we can do for our residents. And is there a possibility and a way we can lower some of those mills that we have out there on property taxes?
Well, I think we should... I think we need to stay on topic here in terms of what we can do right now with hazard pay.
But it is, Laura, because we have to look at it in context. That's what bothers me.
It is the greater conversation, but we have to still also stay on topic because if not, we will very much...
It is part of the topic, though, because you have to... If we don't look at this 53, if we look at this $53,500, or whatever the number is, $64,000, $21,000, that it's not in context of everything, which we haven't seen, we're making an isolated decision that we don't know what the full impact of it will be.
I would have a difficult time with an open-ended type contract, not a contract, but proposal. You know, as Mr. Johnson had put on here, we're talking between $21,500, $31,000, $53,500, or $200,000. This would be a tough, this would be a tough sell to the residents, I think.
I agree.
I think you have to, I think you have to come up with something, but these are, these are so wide open.
I have looked at other plans in other cities, and there's very... Practically everyone I've looked at, that I can find the full details, has some sort of, even if they've done it, they've done it for a month, or they've done it with sun setting, or said they'll relook at it after a period of time. They haven't left it open-ended like this.
Well, the sunset would be when the shelter-in-place order is lifted. That's what we discussed on Thursday. When the shelter-in-place order is lifted, then this ends. The $200,000 that Glenn is referencing is only if it would continue until the end of the year.
I understand that. I get it.
Yeah, but the residents aren't hearing. The other people who are on this call, Commissioner Fournier, are not seeing that written. So I think we go back to what we said on Thursday. It's a lump sum payment. It's prorated for the month of March that they've already, for the time they've already put in, and it's pay, and we pay out April. And if you want to revisit this issue again in May, when, you know, the stay-at-home order is continued by the governor, we can do that.
I don't believe we need to be retroactive till March 17. I think if anything, we're...
Because if we modeled off of McComb County's plan for hazard pay, I believe they went back to April 4, and the city of Detroit also went to April 10.
And Clinton Township went to March 17.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason why you decided to go per hour instead of flat payment? Did you, I mean, was it more money?
Well, at the end of the meeting last week, I had actually presented two options. One was the per hour, and one was a flat payment that was just a fixed amount, period. But the commission started discussing on amount per month, not a flat payment. And an amount per month gives me problems with employees that are working maybe less than full-time, or some that are working more than full-time, and how I adjust for that. It's much cleaner for me if you're going to have a variable rate, that it be an hourly rate and be linked to hours actually worked.
And do you think that the hourly rate is, I mean, fiscally more responsible, or, I mean, where do we lie on that?
Well, depending on how you structure it, you can make any of these costs more or less than the others. The proposal as submitted here does have a maximum number of hours in it. So it does have a top in cost. It's not wide open.
I don't think there's any of us that wouldn't love to do this. We would all love to do this. The concern is that this cost is, is, it's high. If you just look at the city taxes in someone's average tax bill, it'll take 45 houses to pay this, $53,000. There is... We did ask for, we did discuss a lot of things on Thursday. I, for one, asked for a plan, more details, and I really don't feel that I've got, seen all the details. And I think that we need to understand that before we vote on something like this.
If I were to vote today, I would like to see a time period of April 1 through April 30. I would like to see only the high exposure risk, which is the first four bullet points of which employees would be eligible. I would not like it to be retroactive. I would insist on the maximum number of hours of hazard pay be 500. And, yeah, and I also would...
For the month of April, they couldn't get 500.
And I would leave, and I would also leave in that the hazard payment will be paid for hours worked only. It will not be paid on vacation leave, compensatory leave, sick leave, FMLA, EFMLA, or any other leave hours. Also, actually, all of the bullet points from that one down, I agree with. So, I mean, but I, we have to have, I'm sorry, the program being retroactive, March 17. I think we just can't afford, I mean, I would, again, we would all love to shower these people who are putting their lives at risk. We get it, you know? But I think we have to be fiscally responsible as well.
I could support one month at this point till we see the budget, till we see where everything is standing, till we can evaluate this in context and see where this, where this whole pandemic goes. But I absolutely believe it has to be for the highest-risk people, which I believe are the firefighters and the dial-a-ride drivers.
I think we would need a motion on the floor to address that, correct? Because right now, the motion is only to discuss.
That's the current option, yes.
So then, we need, do we need to, like, close out this motion, Mike, or amend this motion?
Mr. Murray?
Ma'am, you make the motion.
Okay, so someone... I can't make the motion, obviously.
Okay. I would make the motion to...
End discussion.
Oh, to end discussion.
Move to end discussion.
Was that Commissioner Hammond to support?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a rule call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Minser? Minser?
Yeah.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Okay, so now do we have a motion on the floor regarding hazard pay?
You need to, someone needs to make that motion.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yes. Somebody, please make a motion.
So I would move to, I'm going to have to work through this as I talk, so, Mr. Murray, you can help me. But motion to approve hazard pay for the firefighters and the dial-a-ride workers for the month of April at $2 an hour, at $2 an hour, subject to, would be paid for hours worked only, not on vacation leave, compensatory leave, sick leave, FMLA, EFMLA, or any other leave hours. And the program would only be for the one month and then reevaluate it in May. Does that cover everything?
Did you want to include the four bullet points of the high exposure risk people, or did you just want to include firefighters and dial-a-ride?
It should be the four bullet points.
I don't know who is involved in all those four bullet points, and that's why I would limit it to firefighters and dial-a-ride drivers.
Well, when I wrote that, Commissioner Fournier, it was specifically for the four groups that were originally exempted from the EFMLA. Those four groups were considered essential by city management. Those four groups, firefighters...
Commissioner Minser, EF, the EFMLA was reversed, and you wrote that, but this is the motion that I'm making.
You're leaving out our Water Department?
I'm not trying to leave out anyone, Commissioner Minser. I am only saying that that discussion, that has not been had. That is my recommendation. I asked for a detailed plan on Thursday. I don't have it. I don't know who's involved, how many, what. I don't know who's involved, how many, what. So right now, that is my motion.
In your motion, uh, one of the bullet points that is in Mr. Johnson's proposed plan is that the hazard pay shall be considered a special payment, not subject to employer or employer pension contributions, and shall not be included in final average compensation for determining pension benefits. Is that part of your motion?
Yes, it is, please. Thank you.
Do we have a support?
I'll support it.
Any further comments? Hearing none, uh, could I have a roll call, please? Yes.
Mensah?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to Commissioner, uh, item number nine B, approval, approved resolution regarding lawn and landscaping services. Uh, Commissioner, uh, sorry, uh, City Manager Johnson.
One moment.
Do you like to explain this one?
You want to put a motion on the table first?
Sure.
Motion to uh, approve a resolution regarding lawn and landscaping services.
Support.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, the issue regarding lawn and landscaping services is one I've received a few calls about and emails about, and I know some of you have as well. I know for a fact that the mayor has. Uh, I have taken the position uh that whether I agree with the governor's order or not, she is the governor, she has the power to make that order, and we're going to enforce it. Uh, I disagree very much with some neighboring communities who have decided on their own that they can overrule the governor. They have the authority to do that. Uh, however, I think in this particular case, I do not see a real problem with allowing lawn and landscaping services to operate, and I'd like to ask the commission to encourage the governor to reconsider this portion of her order.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the resolution that is proposed?
Just one question, this this will be prepared and then sent to Lansing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Should I, do you want me to read the resolution for the record or?
Well, I think we have to correct, I believe here it says Governor Whitmore, and I believe Renee is Whitmere. It's M E R E, I believe.
Whitmer, yeah, yeah.
The only comment I would make, because I, this is very difficult to um, if this goes on very long, it is, especially this growing season, is it's going to be difficult to live with, is, you know, not all landscaping services operate the same way. And I think there's, I don't think that the the decision by Governor Whitmer was made lightly. And it is, it is then creating another level of enforcement, if you will, because if groups of landscape, I mean, there's a lot of individuals out there that, to me, would have absolutely no um, it 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 wouldn't change much at all. But there are other companies that work in groups. And I think this is where it's targeted more than ever. So, well, I certainly want to see all the grass get cut. Is there any other level of enforcement then that we have to worry about if this goes into place? If she, you know.
It's only a resolution.
It's just a resolution to send to the governor. It's not saying that we won't, that we won't enforce it. We're we're going to enforce Governor Whitmer's order.
If if she, I just think there's reasons why she has this in place.
I agree.
Yeah, but it's just a resolution. It's not changing anything. It's just telling her we would like her to 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 revisit that issue.
I understand that. I, there's a lot of things I'd like her to revisit, but um, I I see some real issues with revisiting it, I guess. But I I'll support it. I I just think that we all should be cognizant of the fact that it isn't just the the one guy in a lawnmower out there. It's, it's landscaping. There's also a lot of people that work in groups.
Well, my only issue with this, and I did bring this up to Mr. Johnson when we talked about it. I mean, there are many executive orders that this one by far is the most commented on. Uh, but there have definitely been orders that I've been contacted about that people don't like, you know? And that they'd love us to contact the governor's office. Uh, everyone in my household is pretty mad about the boating issue, right? Um, so, you know, I, everybody, everybody has their own issue with each individual executive order. So I I hesitate to get in the business of knocking on her door, saying, hey, can you revisit this one or this one? And I and I understand Mr. Johnson's position on this. Um, so I I get it, but um, uh, but I, I hate, I hesitate to, I know that, like you said, Commissioner Fournier, she's not making any decisions lately. So, um, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes. Okay, moving on, oops, sorry. Sorry, my agenda just went off of my computer here. Okay, there we go. Okay, moving on to nine C, uh, tall grass and weeds ordinance. Um, let me pull that up, sorry. And now it's not pulling up to my computer. So would someone like to explain that one for us?
Want to put a motion on the table first, or?
Yeah, you need a motion.
Oh, well, we don't have a description of it first?
And apparently, the motion should should be uh moved to rescind the nuisance ordinance relating to lawn grass and noxious weeds until the executive order 2020 dash 42 is rescinded or amended to allow landscaping companies to perform.
Okay. Mo- motion to rescind se- uh, section 35.005 and 35.006 related to lawn grass and noxious weeds until executive order 2020 dash 42 is rescinded or uh, the governor or amended to allow such activity.
Support.
Okay, any questions on this? I believe Mr. Tingley is on uh, the call to explain this um ordinance.
He is on the call.
Yeah, this ordinance, uh, this ordinance doesn't go into effect until May 1st anyways. Uh, but again, in light of uh, in light of the governor's orders, um, we are asking for it to be temporarily suspended um, until the contractors are able to get out there to do do the lawn service. So it it might be the case that um, come May 1st, um, hopefully she'll ease up on that restriction, and this will be a moot point. Uh, that's what I'm hopeful for.
But just in case.
Right, we don't want to be in the position of saying you can't hire a contractor to mow your grass, but if you don't mow your, get your grass mowed, we're going to give you a ticket.
Excellent, okay. Does anyone have any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Agenda item number nine D, approval of purchases and payments of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Moving on to consent agenda, um, item number 10. Could I have a motion, please, for the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Agenda item number 11, city managers' report.
Thank you. First, just announced the the stay at home, stay safe order was extended uh, through the end of April. City buildings remain closed. Yard waste collection, uh, on Friday, April 10th, GFL announced they would be discontinuing yard waste collection effective Monday, April 13th. We went to great lengths to try to notify the residents, particularly in the Monday and Tuesday garbage routes, including purchasing campaign type signs and having them uh, put in the city right away in those areas. Uh, and then on Monday, the 13th, GFL announced that yard waste collection would resume effective Tuesday, April 14th, and that they would be picking up the Monday route as well as the Tuesday route on Tuesday. So they put us through a lot of of hassle for nothing. City commission vacancy, uh, we received notice today that the last date to file nominating petitions for the city commission has been extended by order of the Supreme Court uh, to uh, Friday, May 8th at 5:00 PM. Uh, the court order also reduced the number of signatures required. Uh, in our case, it went from a minimum of 40 and a maximum of 100 to a minimum of 20 and a maximum of 50. Uh, the clerks will accept nominating petitions by the filing deadline in two ways, by appointment. If documents need to be notarized or placed in an envelope in the drop box in the parking lot of City Hall, clearly marked an address to the city clerk. Uh, there is also a possibility, uh, it's not up to us, that the state may provide uh, means for submitting them electronically. And we should hear about that within about three days, I think it was, Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, the census box lunch uh, program, we're going to have our second uh, of the census uh, free community drive-through lunches has kind of replaced a community picnic that was planned. This is going to be in Shady Side Park, and this was submitted incorrectly to begin with. Uh, we corrected it this morning. It originally said City Hall. It's not in City Hall. It's in Shady Side Park. On Wednesday, April 22nd, uh, from 11:00 to 1:00, uh, lunches will be Sam Sorianto's Pizza. Uh, lunches will be on a first come, first served basis and is limited to 300 total lunches. The last event that we did two weeks ago, uh, we served about 200 lunches and another 100 uh, were taken to one of the senior high-rise buildings. Can you go into more detail on that, Lisa?
Um, that that pretty much says it all.
Okay. Uh, the new notification system, Gov Access, is up and running, but not all components are active yet. Uh, Patrick Linnaberry reports great progress and he's quite pleased with the system. Uh, the number who have signed up for notifications is not real impressive yet, but it has increased from 44 under the old system to 202, and that was as of Friday, I believe. There's a URL here uh, for people to sign up. Uh, we're going to be handing out uh, notices with the census lunches, telling people how to sign up. Uh, and if he hasn't done it already, he's going to be putting it on the on the sign uh, at CAS. And uh, Grashit, Northbound Grashit. Maybe it's a crocker, I'm not sure. Uh, water plant ozone machine installation, I by private communication had had advised commissioners of of issues we were having with the ozone machine basically related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, we are supposed to have two engineers from Pureflow, the equipment manufacturer, on site to complete the installation and program. Uh, but due to the the pandemic and various government orders, both California and Michigan, and at one point we had some concerns about New York orders too, uh, but we're beyond those now. And the company is also concerned about the safety uh, for their employees and will not put them on a commercial jet. So we're going to be trying to complete this installation the same way we're holding this meeting. Engineers from Pureflow, city employees, and local contract engineers will be connected via teleconference call uh, and will attempt to complete the installation with remote assistance. Uh, right now, we're awaiting the completion of the installation of internet and wifiing, wifi in the ozone shed at the water plant and the arrival of the control unit, some other electronics that are necessary for the ozone machine. Uh, this is important because in the summertime, when the algae blooms in Lake St. Clair, uh, the taste and and smell of the water uh, goes south on us. Uh, and the ozone purification can correct that. The chemical purification that we use uh, right now uh, will not correct that that odor. Uh, but it does make the water perfectly safe to drink. Added something new here. I'm not going to go through all of them, but we uh, put the upcoming uh, commission meeting schedule and what we have already got scheduled for those meetings uh, as part of this report. Uh, please be advised that this is a general guide only. Items may be added, deleted, or moved to another agenda uh, as we get closer to the meeting. And lastly, it's not shown here, but we got some good news this morning uh, uh, from Fire Captain Shipman. Uh, he has arranged for testing of all of the firefighters, COVID-19 testing that is going to be occurring this week. So we're very pleased about that. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your report, uh, City Manager Johnson.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask you a question? Yeah, this is Glenn.
Yeah, go ahead.
GFL, um, you know, this this caused a lot of um, a lot of problems for us, uh, you know, because we we did a whipsaw with the citizens. You know, first they're picking up, then they're not picking up, then they're picking up. Now, you in turn had some signage prepared and placed in in um, on the different routes. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Here's what I want you to do. I want you to get the bill for those signs, and I want you to send it to GFL. Because we're not paying that bill.
I'd be very pleased to do that, sir.
Good, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions for?
I hate to be hard-nosed, but but believe me, I I turned around and there were so many people called me and said, do you know what the hell is going on? You know, and and they really created a lot of, a lot of unsettling, uh, you know, it was an unsettling situation for us.
It was, and I I think the, I think the prob- what really happened is that they just got so much pushback from all other communities that they backed down on it.
Well, I hope I hope we were one of them.
Okay. Okay, any other, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to, um, the second opportunity for public participation. Um, if you are on the code, uh, I mean, on the call, sorry. Um, Mr. Lenneberry is going to unmute everyone, and if you're, if you're on the call and would like to comment, please say your first name. Um, if you would like to participate, we ask that you state your full name, your address, and keep your comments to two minutes. Hearing none. We'll move on, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Campbell.
Uh, just, everybody's doing a great job working, and hopefully this will end soon. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
No comments.
Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, I want to just say again that I do appreciate all of our city employees and the hard work that they do. I, nothing in that was, in what we have talked about, should detract from that, and I do appreciate it. I also appreciate the hard work of so many people, other people out there, our postal workers, our, the people at Myers, the, the, even the cooks at Beaumont. There's just a lot of people who are just continuing to move through, and I think that's how we all come together and get through this thing. I hope all, everyone stays safe, and again, thank you for everything.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah. Commissioner Mensah.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to give my condolences to the, the family and friends of Ken Baker, also known as Dr. Dirt. He has been the owner of B&amp;W Landscape Supply in our city since nineteen sixty-nine. Uh, he just passed away. He was a member of the Wurts Warriors. He was active in the Special Olympics, and he owned the Idle Hour Yacht Club on Harson's Island. He will be missed in this city. Um, the Department of the U.S., uh, uh, Department of Health and Human Services awarded a grant of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars to My Care Health Center. Um, the main office is on Grosspec on the east side, just north of Elizabeth, that, that is Clinton Township, but they will serve our population. There is also one located in the Clemmons Center at the very end of the, uh, you know, the block of build, uh, buildings. Um, but they, if you have no insurance and you are having healthcare issues, um, or you can also get COVID testing there, um, please call them, contact one of the centers, um, make an appointment. They're also doing, uh, you know, uh, virtual, uh, via, you know, your computer and a camera, um, diagnoses. Um, so with that nice grant, uh, if you don't have insurance, please remember them and utilize their, you know, their services. Well, I have, uh, I would like to, uh, at some point, have a conversation about our businesses in town. Um, with no events by the DDA in March, April, and most of them canceled for May. Um, I'm wondering if we don't, uh, you know, give a TIPA refund to some of those businesses. Um, and, uh, I think that a conversation with the county, um, who are collecting delinquent taxes, since we are suspending the, uh, interest, uh, in the delinquency payments on, like, water bills, um, maybe we can make some kind of a deal that, um, taxes, uh, the, the delinqu- or the interest off the delinquent port portion is also, uh, suspended or, uh, forgiven at this point. I would like to see us look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes, I would, um, I would like to, uh, again, state about the, uh, Census twenty, twenty twenty, how important that is for, for the city of Mount Clemmons. And I watched you on your, uh, Facebook, um, presentation this afternoon. Uh, I believe we're at fifty-two percent, three percent. Is that correct, Mayor?
Uh, fifty-four, yep, fifty-four.
We need, we need to be way up there. We need to be, we need to be in the ninety percent, ninety-five percent. Um, it's very important because that money, um, the, money from the federal government is based on population. And, um, we really need to make sure that everybody fills that form out. It didn't take me, if it took me seven minutes, that was a lot. And, um, we need to, everybody needs to fill that out. I'd like to take a, a, a quick shout-out to the first responders and and, and a group that doesn't get represented very often, the last responders. My, uh, my daughter Allison, who is celebrating her twenty-fifth birthday today, is a licensed funeral director i- in the, in Gross Point. Uh, she, she's meeting this Clovis nineteen epidemic daily. Uh, we need to keep both groups in our, in our prayers, both first responders and the last responders. And with that, once a clemite, always a clemite.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start by saying thank you to everyone who reached out, um, the COVID-nineteen, uh, to reach out to myself and to my family. Uh, the COVID-nineteen, uh, virus, um, hit our family, and, um, we lost our, my uncle this week. So, um, thank you to everybody who reached out. Um, it was, when you can't, uh, have a funeral and you can't mourn your loved ones, um, it's nice to have that kind of support. So, thank you very much. Um, if you are having trouble, uh, putting food on the table for yourself or for your family, if you know somebody who is having trouble, uh, Forgotten Harvest was at the Jermaine Jackson Community Center today, and they will be there every Monday, um, for the foreseeable future. So, um, they, they begin at nine A.M. and go until one P.M. Uh, so please, if you, if you know of anyone who's having trouble, um, with food assist, with food, um, please, uh, let them know that they can pick up food. Uh, all you have to have is an I.D. And, um, and you drive up to the community center parking lot, and they load food into your car. It is a, it's a great service to our community, and we thank Forgotten Harvest for, um, and for having that for us. Um, like, it was mentioned before by, uh, Commissioner Voorhees, uh, the census is critically important for our community. I can't stress that enough, so encourage your neighbors, encourage your neighbors to attend our event on Wednesday. Um, it's, it's nine questions that are confidential, that cannot be used, uh, for you or against you. Um, but the, it's, it's critically important for funding and for representation for our community. Um, I would like to thank Commissioner Fournier, um, for securing two hundred masks for our dial-a-ride riders. Um, she saw the need that we had and was able to, uh, contact some friends and was able to get us two hundred masks. And, and, and a day, and days like this, it's, it's a tough thing to find. So, thank you, Commissioner Fournier. We really appreciate it. Um, I'd also like to thank Captain Shipman. Um, we, we, in order for our firemen to be able to continue their jobs safely and to keep our community safe, we need to know if they've been exposed and if they are carrying the coronavirus. So, um, to be able to test them, I, on every Zoom or conference call that I've been on in the last four weeks, um, every community has faced not being able to test their first responders. So for us to be able to do that now is, is an incredible achievement. So, um, thank you, Captain Shipman, for making that happen. And, um, that's all I have this evening. Um, everyone, please stay safe and happy and healthy, and, uh, hopefully you can all, um, manage the virtual learning that, uh, started today, um, like we are in our house, without pulling out all your hair. So, not that that happened in our house today. So, thank you very much, everybody, and, um, stay safe. I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
And all those opposed? Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.